And congratulations to all those who won the election yesterday. And I look forward to working with them. Governor Rosendale, notice of public hearing. Please take notice that a continuation of a public hearing will be held by the Town Board, the Town of Rosendale, on November 6, 2013, at 6:30 PM at the Rosendale Community Center, 1055 Route 32, Rosendale, Ulster County, New York. To hear all interested persons on the proposed Hudson River Valley Resorts LLC master plan. Please take further notice that a copy of said proposed master plan is available at Town Hall, 424 Main Street, Rosendale during normal business hours by order of Town Board, Town of Rosendale, October 20, 2013, Deborah Tierney, Town Department. And there is an affidavit of publication to compile. So as usual, I'm going to ask that I'm going to call the names of the people that have signed up. You have three minutes to express your opinions, any statements you'd like to make. Please come up and speak at the mic. Say your name and where you live, what town you're from, I should say. And when the timer goes off, you know, I just try to be aware of that. The other thing is, I ask that the public stay calm, no applause, no jeering, let's keep it civil. Ryan, do you have anything you want to say before we start?
No. Well, I'm not going to...
No presentation?
We held it open.
Okay.
If anybody has questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay. So the first person on my list is Sheila DeBord-Gallion. Yeah, I'm a little short. Hello?
Hello, hello. Thank you. Hello, Town Board, thank you. My name is Sheila DeBord-Gallion, and I am a resident of Rosendale. I have three comments I'd like to make. One is, there's no mention of onsite parking for day-use users of the site in the master plan. If this is not taken into account in the planning phase, then the creation of such areas will not be managed in the environmentally sensitive manner that all of the other buildings, parking spaces, and street skate planning has been. I think the parking is critical to me specifically because my medical condition, my esophagitis, makes walking long distances a challenge. And I would encourage inclusion of visitor and day-use parking areas. I currently have a temporary handicap parking pass, but when that expires, I still have physical challenges that make the walk from the rail trail entrance to the swimming area on Fourth Lake difficult, especially if I'm traveling there with my daughter. And as that is my plan to enjoy the lake, it's a mile and a half from my home, I'm hoping that that can be changed in the master plan. The second comment is, is it possible for us to create a public-private partnership between the Town of Rosendale and HRVR to facilitate swimming as soon as possible? As the Town of Rosendale is no longer hiring lifeguards for the pool, would it be possible for our town to provide lifeguards at Fourth Lake or Williams Lake sooner than the 10 years down the road it will take to complete the project? Although great work is being done to raise money for the pool, this kind of partnership seems to me to be the most realistic way to bring swimming back to our community. And so I'd love to see that investigated if possible. My third comment is that I believe there should be a community or town liaison to the Property Owners Association. That association is going to be made of volunteers, and those volunteers are charged with enforcement of deed restrictions on such things as limited tree clearing and other restrictions put in place by the DEC when they approve this project. How will the POA be able to enforce such restrictions? Will the DEC police be called if someone decides to start bulldozing behind their home? What if the properties are not sold immediately and there are too few people to volunteer to run the association? My comment is that there should be a mechanism through a liaison to the POA or a member of the POA that represents the Town of Rosendale, its elected officials and the community members. By reaching out and asking the community to participate in the association, it will simply allow for a fluid exchange of ideas and for the responsibility for the protection of those deed restrictions to be shared by all of us in the community who care for the protection of the environment and this resource. It will also keep the POA from adding or adopting policies that seek to exclude the larger Rosendale community down the road. In terms of keeping the trail clean and safe, there are opportunities for HRVR, the resort operator, and the owners of future homes to benefit from volunteer efforts of the community. I would like to see the Rosendale Town Board and a member of the community included as this project moves forward. Thank you.
Next is Noel Damon.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Noel Damon, I'm a resident of Rosendale for 30 years. The master development plan describes a project that follows a familiar business scenario: create a housing development that commands higher-than-normal prices and hence profit because it's centered on attractions such as a golf course or a ski slope. Many such developments include a spa as part of an attraction mix. It's unusual, however, for a housing development to use a spa as a primary attraction, as HRVR's master development plan does. And the success of those who have tried this combination elsewhere has been next. By approving the master development plan, Rosendale will increase its investment and its liability in this project, just as it did with approving a zoning amendment and the formation of a private sewage treatment plant. As an investor, it would be prudent for the town to exercise due diligence, that is, to verify the validity of the business case and the developer's ability to successfully implement it. Yet the master plan does not address these areas at all. Nowhere does it describe how the proposed development will sustain itself financially, nor does it identify other successful long-term businesses built on the spa-centered housing model. Also absent is any statement, much less any detail, indicating that the developer has the financial capability to take the project from the first shovel in the ground to a point where it will generate enough revenue to guarantee its completion. Most importantly, neither does the master development plan or any other material provided by HRVR provide any information about prior experience building anything approaching a $200 million resort. Managing member Rick Steele said at the beginning of this hearing, "We've developed several large communities and numerous projects." Yet, in the six years that the project has been on the table, HRVR and its principals have not identified a single project that has, could be scrutinized, have no photos of completed structures, have offered no testimonials about fiscal benefits from other communities in which development took place. What exactly have they built and why haven't we been able to see it? Do the people of HRVR have experience creating financially sustainable residential projects? These are reasonable questions to be asked. Do they have cash in hand to take this project to a break-even point? Is there firm commitment or even a solid proposed prospect for an operator to manage the hotel and spa? Are the buyers for the homes? If there are, can we hear about them? If not, then in the end, how does this project differ from any other spec housing project? Holding an investment group accountable is like trying to hold water in your hands. We need to know that there are owners who will be invested to see this to the end and whom the board can hold accountable for enforcing and upholding all the requirements set upon them. The absence of answers to these questions in the master development plan should greatly concern the Town Board. And before approving this project, I ask the board members to perform their own due diligence and insist that HRVR demonstrate to the community its capability to fulfill the vision they've presented to the town. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you. You practiced that one, didn't you? Pat Thompson?
Hi, my name is Pat Thompson, and I've owned a home in Ulster Park for 30 years. Many of those years included time spent enjoying the charm and natural beauty of Williams Lake, where my family paid yearly to be Lake Club members. Since fully closed, I followed the progress of this proposed development from both sides of the fence, from the pro and the con side. I've also looked at it from a business perspective, as I own an ad agency that works primarily in real estate, bringing new communities and buildings successfully to market. So I've got an intimate understanding of and experience with a host of developers. But what I want to say today is that over the past 15 years of my real estate experience, I've never met a more community-focused, genuine, or accommodating group of developers. Tim, Rick, and Brian have repeatedly gone out of their way to listen and make positive changes to their plan, to the benefit of the community at large. From the incredible new rail trail segment to fun creative gatherings and events at the lake, to unbelievable support for the Rosendale Pool, I can't imagine another developer spending the money and considerable amount of time they've taken to be a constructive presence here. And anyone who's met or had dealings with Tim and his group have experienced this. What we all need to do now, and I say this to both sides, is to work together to make this new community a resounding success. We'll all benefit in big and small ways. The tax base will grow, Rosendale businesses will draw new customers and clients, jobs will be created, and we'll have some opportunity to once again relish the lake as paying guests. I urge you to let them proceed without delay, and especially to support them with positivity and an eye to the betterment of the community. Because when people work together, great things come to pass. Thanks.
Thank you. Victoria Coyne?
Victoria Coyne, I own a home in the town for a long time, my business. I feel that we went looking for a developer, we could find someone better. I think to trust these people with that fabulous piece of land is something we should move forward with.
Thank you. Bill Davenport?
Good evening. My name is Bill Davenport. I live in Stonebridge. I'm not a resident of Rosendale, but I've been a neighbor for 77 years. I speak strongly in support of this effort. A number of my friends have gotten their first job at Williams Lake. I look forward to the day when my grandchildren can say that they got their first job at Williams Lake. I don't think, I've known Tim now for four, five years, I don't think we've found a better person for this. The community needs to grow, we need to set a tone, and I think Tim is the person to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. With Rick Alfandre?
I'm Rick Alfandre. I am a resident of Marble Town, live in High Falls with my family, my wife and two daughters. I've been, lived in Ulster County for 37 years, several four years in the previous ten. I own Alfandre Architecture, Eco Builders, been practice, private practice for 22 years. We've designed well over, designed or been part of well over 200 projects in those 22 years, including a Milwauka Lodge, all the buildings at Emerson Place, and recently the Rosendale Theater Accessibility Side Project. Our business has made a commitment to beauty, health, and a better future for our children, for all of us, for our children. That also aligns with my volunteer work with the U.S. Green Building Council. I'm currently the chair of the Upstate Chapter, New York Upstate Chapter, involved with the Hudson Valley branch, and intimately familiar with what we're now commonly calling green buildings and sustainable design. I've been involved in that field my whole career, 33 years, and I mention it in the context of the efforts of these developers. I am aware of the good work that these developers are putting into this project. I have become, my family and I have become friendly with Mr. Alred and his family for the last three years. These are honest, high-integrity people, and I believe that when the day comes that these projects, these buildings, these sites are built, we're going to see a good, great contribution to our community, to Ulster County, to Hudson Valley. We need it. We need tax base, we need good, quality economic development. And it's my opinion that this master plan and this project meets many of the standards of the Rosendale Comprehensive Plan, particularly with respect to the goals outlined with regards to economic development. It's my opinion, obviously you have to judge it for what it's worth. But again, we need to make decisions for the future for our children. And looking at this place and how many people, how many families have enjoyed Williams Lake over the years, I can echo others here, I don't think we could have found a better group to redevelop this property. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else on, you got a couple over here. Chris Bislowski?
I'm a resident of the town, I'm also chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I am not offering this comment on behalf of the Board of Appeals.
Speak.
I am a resident, town resident, as well as the chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I have one comment that I'm offering as an individual, and wanted to clarify that the Board of Appeals was not asked to review the plan.
And just to be clear, and you know, I know the term is going to be ending soon, but anything that would possibly come off the Board of Zoning Board of Appeals, I know that's not likely to happen, you would not be able to comment, it would be a part of the report.
Thank you. My concern is whether or not the town has, at this time, adequate staff, budget, expertise in our building office, yes, code enforcement office, to oversee the project. So my question is whether this is the appropriate time for the council to discuss with the developer that they would fund a clerk of the works that could monitor the development on behalf of the town. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Doug Mottell?
That's me. Thank you so much for giving us this extra time to come, I wasn't able to come last time. So I wanted to say that I do live in Rosendale, I have a business on Main Street, I have a home here in Rosendale, I have a marketing company that I run, we specialize in tourism marketing, and because of that, my job requires me to travel all over and talk to communities about how they might get more heads and beds, if you will. And I'm definitely, you know, seeing something that I don't know if everyone has the opportunity to witness, which is communities that no longer have merchandise, I'm sorry, that no longer have industries that once supported them, in big trouble. And I see communities that embrace tourism, and it's pretty exciting to see how, when people really go for it, how they can turn it around. You know, the people who come here now are a certain demographic, in my observation. They are people who love nature, outdoor sports, these are not the casino gambling demographic, it's not, you know, people who are looking for the boardwalk, that kind of stuff. They're people who want to really appreciate what we have here. And this project is so in keeping with that. When you look at the plans for holistic health center that they have, you know, to me Omega is a very good comparison to how Reinbeck has benefited from having this kind of all, you know, all-inclusive kind of programming. So in that regard, I think it's a really great match. And I also want to say that, you know, when we chose to move here seven years ago, we chose to move to a town that had an elementary school, that had a hardware store, that had a bank, that had a supermarket, that had a swimming pool. And I think that if you're not paying attention to those signals, you're really not paying attention to what is happening across the country. And to me, you know, the developers came here, and there are other developers who come to this region, and the first thing that they do is they hire outside. They go to New York City and they hire a marketing company. But the Williams Lake project asked around, and they actually hired on Main Street. And they have been hiring as a result of the fact that they have used our web development and our video, through our company, they have employed graphic designers, videographers, video editors, these are the kinds of, there's a lot of talent around here, and they've really been tapping into that. They also made the land continually available for all kinds of things, science, you know, celebrations, a lot of nonprofits have been using the land. And it's kind of amazing when you're in the inside of watching what's involved in helping to market, how exhausting it is for them to, they've been spending so many hours. And I just want to say that we're really, I feel like we've just gotten lucky, very lucky, that this is the mindset that shows us that. Thank you.
Thank you. John McEnroe?
Hello, my name is John McEnroe, resident here at Rosendale on Sados Avenue. I've been living here in Ulster County since 1994. My partner has been here for 35 years. We have lived in Rosendale since 1998, 99. I've been on the planning board for eight years, and I am also the director of facilities and underground construction at Sunning Puls. I recognize good development when I see it, and I recognize what's good for Rosendale. And quite frankly, I echo some of the other comments from earlier, we're very lucky to have this developer. They're green-friendly, I see the vitality that they bring, the support of the rail trail. You know, this property is for sale for two and a half years. The fact that we have the developer that we do is just a stroke of luck. And both my partner, Jack, and I strongly support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other names on the list, but if anyone else would like to make a comment, you're welcome. Anita?
I spoke before, but our attorney couldn't be here, and he wanted to know if I could meet his statement for him, which I had to pick up at his house, because I was out.
Do you want to just submit it, because you had said it this way?
Yes, he did submit it by electronic mail already.
Yeah, and we had said that we would, you know, one of the reasons we held this open is because you said your attorney wanted to make an appearance.
I know, but he had an urgent matter with another client, and so he wasn't able to be here himself. Up to you.
I guess it's, I would say it's before.
It's fine with me, is there anyone else that hasn't spoken yet? Anita? Did you want to say something?
I said, hold on, Anita, actually.
Yeah, yeah, I told Anita, yeah, it's a little confusing here. Just give us a minute, let Anita speak, she was called on first. I said Anita was called on before you stepped up?
Hello. My name is Anita Williams-Peck. I was born in Kingston, New York, on June 5, 1940. And on June 10, I was taken to a little cabin at Williams Lake Hotel, where the chalet now stands. And I have lived there my entire life, except for the four years in college, one year in Europe, and two years in Manhattan. I know Williams Lake inside and out, I know the land inside and out. And in 1987, I worked with my father since I graduated from college, from 1963 to 1987, when he passed away. In 1986, he was diagnosed with cancer, which took him in 1987. But in 1986, my father said to me, as not a daughter, but as a businessperson, "Come on, let's take a walk. This hotel will not sustain itself for many more years unless it has housing, condos, individual housing, or timeshares. And let's take a walk." And we took a walk on the property, and he told me, not scientifically, "You cannot build here, you may build here. This would be a great place, this might not be a great place." And actually showed me all these places. Well, okay, this took in my brain, and I said, okay, this is in my brain, this is a vision that my father gave me, which I kept in my brain for a long, forever, it's still in my brain. But it was not financially possible for me to do this. So in 19, 2006, I decided that I'm going to see, no, 2004, I'm going to decide to see what's out there, because the time for rebuilding will be coming soon, it's right around the corner. So it took two and a half years. I refused, I refused. A lot of people who wanted to buy Williams Lake, several of them nonprofit, that was not in my brain. I needed to know about the vision of anybody who was going to purchase it. And I take full credit for finding these people, ladies and gentlemen, actually they found me. But the thing that really took it from me was, when these people were looking around, they never came in the building. And I thought, that's strange. Then they came back, and they did come in the building, and one gal said to the other, "There's a 415-acre land conservancy here." I went, oh, here it goes again. She said, "Can you imagine? We won't have to do that." And now it's a 515 land conservancy on 800 acres of property, and I don't think it gets any better than that. And I will take credit for that, because I think I chose the right person to take the Williams legacy that we had for 80 years. And remember way back when, many ladies and gentlemen, this was a community of tourism with many houses, and tourism was it in this community. And now, I think it's only the 1850 House if I'm not correct. So let's expand it, and let's get towards the back of Rosendale. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to understand, that document has already been submitted?
Yes.
So I don't know why we would allow this to be read out unless somebody else is going to read it. She's already going to read, we have that document as part of the record.
Yes.
So I don't, I see no reason for you to show that.
Okay.
Does everybody agree to that?
Somebody read it?
Do we have anybody else that would like to speak?
I'm going to make a recommendation that we keep the public hearing open. As we go forward, I expect that we will be asking the developers to make some amendments to the plan. And what we'd like to do is then have that public hearing continue to be open for that comments on the changes. So I believe we should probably plan, should we set a date for that time?
We still have the Ulster County Planning Board's meeting.
There's their meeting tonight.
Mayor comments, so maybe next week.
I would say not, I would say that we decide when the change, that's what we, I would like to say, that tonight their meeting with the county, we have the town, the town planning board's comments, and we have the written comments, we have the comments from the public. Next week, I'd like to compile some of the things that I might present to the board for changes and upgrades. And then the following week, ask them to implement those by that following meeting, which I think is the first week, Wednesday in December. And then I think at that time, would that be the time, any other comments on any of the changes?
People could have time to review those.
People could have time to review those changes and make comments.
Right. So that would be my first week. And do we need to vote on that?
Are you going to have it at 7:30?
We can set the time to next week. But if I leave it open, do I have to set the time now to keep it open?
Yes.
I should do that.
Or you can decide, you can do it without date at this point, and then next week.
All right, so that's what I'm going to do because we never said what kind of glitches we might have from now until then. I'm going to say that we'll not take any more comments next week, but we'll leave it open for, you know, to be able to set a time next week for when we will have a public hearing the following month. Okay?
Look, Eva can submit things in writing.
Absolutely.
And I would encourage anyone, I actually couldn't hear all the comments, so if anyone made comments, Deb takes really good notes, but if you made comments and they are in writing, please submit them.
So that's a motion? We have to just, just, you know?
A motion.
So I'm going to make a motion to hold a public hearing open for future dates set next Wednesday.
I'll second.
This is not for comment.
I just have a question.
No. Go ahead.
I just, you guys talked about being able to review the changes. If there was some way that we could be made aware of what changes were made, that would be helpful, just so we don't have to look through the whole thing again to find the changes.
We would be discussing that at our next meeting. That's what I just said.
Thank you.
Roll the vote, Councilman Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hassett?
Yes.
Councilman Ryan?
Yes.
Supervisor? Okay, now a little dilemma, because it's only 5:00 after 7:00. We do have the meeting, we're going to break. The meeting is not until 7:30, so it's true.
But I thought there's two more public hearings tonight.
They don't start until 7:30. It is an hour, you serious?